Elaine, if you'll please do the roll call.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hellinger?
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Mayor Riggle?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Jeff Slider. He's our chaplain for the Delaware City Police Department, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all please stand.
I'll bring this around this way and say that this is a special and very difficult council because it is council that is not in full attendance. And that makes it particularly difficult to those who have worked with Joe for so long and known him. And it reminded me of a passage of scripture that I think Joe would be pleased to hear read, and it comes from Psalm 30 and says, "Give thanks to the Lord, all you his children; give thanks to his holy name; for these difficulties are but for a moment, and his favor, God's favor, is for a lifetime." We may tarry for the night, but joy comes in the morning. And with Joe, his joy is full. He is complete. He was a man of great faith. And for this city and this county, the joy in Joe is that he still lives on here. His projects, his care, his concern, his love for this city and this county will not stop just because his breath may have. It will continue on. And though we are sad this evening, we are joyful in the morning when he manifests all that he has done and all the love that he has given to this city as it continues on. Let's pray. My God and our Creator, we are thankful that in times of difficulty and grief and loss, we can look to you as the God of all comfort. We are thankful, Lord, that even though the tasks and the difficulties and the considerations and the business of this city go on, our hearts stop for a moment. And Lord, we are thankful that you hold our hearts and strengthen these men and these women for the task yet ahead tonight. We would ask that you give them wisdom, give them your presence, that there might be a sense of peace. And Father, I would ask that you would give them a sense of Joe's presence here, too. And we just thank you for the fact that we begin at your throne and trust in your hand. And we thank you for all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
The legislative flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Item four on the agenda is the approval of the motion summary of the regular meeting of council held March 13, 2017, as recorded and transcribed. What is the wish of council?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Item five is the consent agenda. Elaine Field, please read this into the record.
Item A, acceptance of the motion summary for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting held on October 12, 2016. Item B, acceptance of the motion summary for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting held on February 21, 2017. Item C, Resolution Number 17-21, a resolution appointing members to various boards, commissions, and/or committees and specifying the terms of the appointment. Item D, Resolution Number 17-22, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement regarding the police department to obtain in-car printers from the Ohio Department of Public Safety.
Thank you. What is the wish of council for the consent agenda?
I move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Item six is time set aside for letters, petitions, or public comments for anything that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item seven is committee reports. Mr. Jones?
Just a quick question. We had to reschedule the Finance Committee meeting because the Council motion was passing. Do we have any idea when that's going to be rescheduled?
No, I believe Clerk McCloskey is working on that.
Give me some dates because I got a lot of...
Tomorrow?
That's not... No, tomorrow would actually work. Okay, thank you. That's up to me.
I think because of travels that have been scheduled, I'll put some dates out tomorrow.
Are we looking for any then? Or are we still trying to meet?
If we can, it's just it's trying to squeeze in between Councilwoman Keller's. She's going to be out uptown.
I'm not traveling at all the last three weeks of April, so...
You're not?
No.
Okay.
I'm traveling twice.
Okay.
Just giving dates.
Well, and if it does, if we need to have one earlier, maybe I can have somebody else.
Sure.
Sitting in for Joe. So we'll...
Okay.
Let's schedule it.
If you're flexible that way.
Give me dates and...
Okay. We might be able to do it.
Okay. We'll work on that. All right, Mrs. Keller, do you have anything?
No.
Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
Nothing.
Mr. Schaefer? Neither do I. Okay. Move on to item eight. Consideration of Ordinance Number 17-21, an ordinance approving the renaming of Veterans Drive to Dejanovalway. I know Elaine was supposed to read that, but I just took it away from her. Sorry about that, Elaine. I would like to rename Veterans Drive, which is the drive off of Health Road that runs between Health and back into the parks. It's right now Veterans Drive to Dejanovalway to honor Joe. I did talk to Joe Thursday evening, and he told me that he would be honored to have this renamed. So that's why I'm bringing before council. I know Jerry Warner was going to reach out to Ron, who said he was fine with that. And we also need to reach out to the state because they abut that property also. So, yeah. I just think it would be a great way to remember Joe. He was a veteran. Veterans Plaza was near and dear to his heart. It wouldn't be there if it weren't for him. And I just think it's appropriate. If I say anymore, I'll cry, so I'll put a stop. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to suspend the rules requiring three readings on Ordinance 17-21.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Is there an emergency clause on this?
No.
Does there need to be one to expedite it or anything?
No, we're looking at possibly, maybe Memorial Day weekend, doing something nice then.
Okay, then I move for approval of Ordinance 17-21.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Hellinger. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Moving on to item nine. Elaine, if you'll please read the Resolution Number 17-15.
Resolution Number 17-15, a resolution adopting the proposed changes to the user fees for Hidden Valley Golf Course.
Yeah, this is the third reading of this resolution, which really adopts a number of changes that the Golf Course Advisory Committee had recommended both to the Parks Board and then subsequently to City Council to address, really trying to make that operation more sustainable, to increase the number of, to increase its utilization in the community, and to introduce some new programs that we think will attract more families and more people to the course. And this, obviously, this came up during the budget discussions for 2017. And council at that time asked that a director and his staff take a look at ways to increase revenue out there. And that report is before you. And we're recommending its adoption so we can get on with the, some of the changes in pricing for the 2017 session, season, rather. And Mr. Miller is on vacation this week at spring break, but Ms. Matthews is here if you have any questions.
Any questions? What is the wish of council on Resolution 17-15?
Move for approval of Resolution 17-15.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Rohr. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries.
Item 10 is second reading of Resolution 17-20. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Resolution Number 17-20, a resolution accepting the city of Delaware's Bike Master Plan 2025.
Again, this is a, this is a second reading on the bike plan, which has been in the works for the last year. This was undertaken in 2016, updating our previous bike plan. It's gone through a number of different committees, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, the Planning Commission, and now City Council. There has been a considerable amount of interest in the plan. And more recently, there's been some interest in one of the recommendations, which is, kind of continues a recommendation in the past that we talked about at the last meeting, is that that is a Delaware run, pathway along the Delaware Run, which at this point is only a concept. And I know there are going to be some people that will attend the April 10 meeting, who I believe have corresponded to council already, to voice their concern for that project. I have heard from some others, and I think I forwarded something to council today from an individual in the community who had a different perspective. And so I think council will get a, hopefully a well-rounded view of the different projects in two weeks when that comes before you. So right now, there's really no action you need to take tonight. But if there's, there may be folks here tonight who want to comment on it, and that's...
Is there someone that would like to comment on this bike path this time?
So, move the three readings into the tenth?
Yeah, I think, probably, I would almost, probably recommend, given that, I think there are going to be a lot of comments at the meeting on the 10th, you may want to take it to another meeting after that and consider it as your main meeting.
There's surely a rush on this.
No, there isn't. There isn't.
Mayor, you came out in the ring. Did you want to say anything about the bike path tonight?
Well, I'm not sure that I can...
Okay.
No opinion of the details.
Okay, then you can come back to the next meeting and learn a lot more. Okay, thank you. Thank you for being here anyways. Item 11 is the third reading of Ordinance 17-10. Elaine, if you'll please read this into the record.
Ordinance Number 17-10, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $11 million, $15,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of various public infrastructure improvements together with all related appurtenances thereto in declaring an emergency. Emergency clause. This ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, property, health, safety, and welfare of the city. And for the further reason that this ordinance is necessary to be immediately effective in order to issue and sell the notes, which is necessary to enable the city to timely retire the outstanding notes and thereby preserve its credit. Wherefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its passage.
Thank you. Mr. Stelter?
Thank you. This is the third reading of legislation to authorize the reissuance of notes to continue the financing strategy for the Glen Road improvements. This, the principal amount actually represents a paydown of $600,000 from the debt issued last year. Based on current development trends, things are starting to look a little more positive today than what they were 2010, 2011 with the growth out there in that area. As you're aware, the debt is to be paid back with new community charges on primarily residential development out in that area. And, but like I said, the development's picked up. I think we're making pretty good headway to, at some point here in the near future, having that funded with the improvements that are out there. We are planning a note sale for later this week. Hopefully, we can get some decent rates. But entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions by council? What is the wish of council?
Move for approval of the emergency clause in Ordinance 17-10.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Schaefer, a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of Ordinance 17-10.
Second.
Did you do rule suspension? Okay, this is wrong. This is my second. Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Third reading, so we didn't name it. Emergency clause.
We did.
We didn't name the rule suspension.
Now it's third reading.
Okay.
No, my fifth.
It's fair.
I just got confused.
No, it's the third.
Well, this is confusing. Okay, anyways, let's move on to item 12, which is the third reading of ordinance number 17-11. It's okay, we forgive you.
Ordinance Number 17-11, an ordinance amending Sections 913.03A and 913.14 of Chapter 913 of the codified ordinance of the city of Delaware, Ohio, establishing tap fees and water rates and repealing existing Sections 913.03A and 913.14.
Mr. Stelter?
Thank you. This is also a third reading, so we don't need to vote on rule suspension nor an emergency clause. We've had some discussion about water utility charges, both at council a little bit and at a Finance Committee meeting. The legislation represents a slight increase in the water and refuse rates. Sewer and storm sewer at this point are staying the same as they were in the past. I think the average rate, the customer's utility bill is going to go up 2%, 3% or something like that. The council does approve the legislation. Rates will be effective May 1st. Go out with that bill that goes out the first part of May. The water change also includes a slight increase in the, what we call a tap fee, that customers pay when they tap into, not the capacity fee, it's a tap fee to pretty much, I think, cover the cost of installing a meter. It's paid for by the city. That also is going up slightly, keep up with our cost to provide that service. Entertain any questions council may have?
I have one, Mayor. Will the, will the April invoices notification that passes for people's invoices notifications?
You can put that in there.
No.
That's in there.
When was the last time that we raised this tap fee?
It's currently here.
Sorry, you've got to come to the microphone.
I can't give you the exact date, but it's been several years, probably at least 10. It's been $350 for the, when somebody wants the city to pay for the connection from the water main to the meter pit. That, that's the labor cost and our equipment cost. We're proposing raising that to $700. And if it's a larger water main, such as a one-inch service line, we're raising that from $400 to $800. And that just covers our cost. We don't get a whole lot of those because most of the people, those are single-family residents that, not necessarily the development, but when somebody wants to connect to the city water that wasn't previously connected, then they can either have their plumber or contractor do it or have us do it. They usually, they, so far, they've been, when we do do it, they typically pay our fee because we're a little bit less expensive than a private contractor. But we're just raising those fees to get them in line with what our expenses are.
So in a given year, how many of those do you do?
A dozen.
Well, you keep up saying slight fees. When you double it, to me, that's not a slight fee.
From $350 to $700.
I said that before, look, I knew it wasn't a lot. I knew, but it was that we hadn't, it's probably been over 20, 25 years.
Okay, I feel better. Any other questions for Brad or Dean? What is the wish of council on Ordinance 17-11?
Move for the group of ordinance 17-11.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
And we'll move on to item 13, which is the third reading of ordinance Number 17-12.
Ordinance Number 17-12, an ordinance amending the refuse collection and utility services portions of the schedule of fees and service charges.
You up again?
Yes, this, again, is the third, third reading of our refuse rates, which is a component of our monthly utility charge. As we've discussed in the past, the changes, the residential portion of the bill is going from $19.73 a month to $20.60 a month, which I believe is about a 4.41% increase. The commercial dumpster is going down. I believe it's lower than 10%, isn't it?
Very, it's between 10 and 15%.
Yes, between 10 and 15%. We had discussions about, quite a bit of discussion about the commercial service. And there'll probably be some more down the road. I think we were wanting to have some more at the Finance Committee meeting. Obviously, that meeting didn't occur.
Public Works is, we're meeting on the 4th.
Okay. But at this point in time, alls we're doing is changing the rates. They're actually going down. We still have the mandate that residential apartments still use the city service. It's one of the items being considered. And if that does change, it would take different legislation. But that's the refuse changes. Entertain any questions you may have? The last time the refuse rates were raised residential was 2011. Went from $19.16 a month to $19.73. Been the same for six years.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Stelter? What is the wish to council on Ordinance 17-12?
I move for approval of Ordinance 17-12.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Keller, a second by Mr. Jones. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move on to item 14. Ordinance Number 17-16.
Ordinance Number 17-16, an ordinance approving amendment to Chapter 1168.07, replacement of removed trees of Chapter 1168 Tree Preservation Regulations of the Planning and Zoning Code.
Mr.? Yes, look at smile for.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this proposal is to do really a cleanup change to Chapter 1168 of the Tree Preservation Regulations. It has been recommended for approval after some months of discussion with Shade Tree Commission as well as your planning commission. And effectively, what it does is it codifies the process that we do today, particularly with respect to Section 1168.07. Nothing else in the chapter was really up for consideration. It was brought before us by some other internal departments that some clarification language in here made some sense with respect to how we can spend the payment in lieu of tree replacement dollars that come in from time to time from various developments. As you'll recall, this section provides for three different ways to replace trees. Number one, and the most desirable onsite for many development. Obviously, you can't necessarily, depending on the site and the number of trees, do that on every particular site. So then it provides for a payment in lieu of replacing some of those trees or a tree bank option. And the other item in this that really clarifies how a tree bank option could work. That's fairly unusual for anyone to take advantage of that section. You have to own, obviously, multiple pieces of land or work with some other landowner to secure a tree bank site. But we wanted to clarify this. Ted Miller is obviously not here. He and myself and Darren have worked on this as staff through the process. Also provided for you today, earlier today, some communication I received when I was on vacation in Washington last week for the BIA, asking you to essentially continue this hearing tonight. I wrote on this. I think a lot of those comments, as I noted for you, were really kind of more larger policy comments on the whole chapter. I don't, my professional opinion is I don't see a reason not to move this particular item forward tonight. And if you wanted to direct us to look at the broader chapter, we can obviously do that and continue the conversation with them. I think there were two main points that they brought to my attention, not just in what you read today, but in just talking to them. One of them was to ensure that the variance procedure is available under this chapter. And the zoning code provides for, in Chapter 1128, And the zoning code provides for, in chapter eleven twenty-eight, provides for variances to be applied for and to go through that process for this chapter as it does for other chapters. That, that isn't restated in each chapter, it's contained in eleven twenty-eight. And the other primary item, I think that they had really brought to our attention with respect to these particular changes was around the sentencing replacement option three, where it says at no time shall the fee be less than a hundred dollars per caliper inch of required replacement. I believe they have the feeling that that codifies the fee in some way. It obviously doesn't say exactly what the fee is, it just says it won't be less than that. The fee today is a hundred dollars per caliper inch. It's been that way since, for the entire time I've been here, so eleven plus years. Probably due to perhaps relook at that fee as well sometimes. I'd be fine, and I'm sure Ted would too, if you wanted to just simply strike out that sentence in its entirety. And I would think at a future council date, we would bring forward to you a change to the fee ordinance to simply incorporate that hundred dollar per caliper inch fee that we've charged and we continue to charge within the confines of that relatively new fee ordinance. I think we passed the first one just a few years ago. And then if we look to increase that fee, we could obviously do that. One of their other issues was sort of tangential to this was that if you have a planned development has its own section that talks about tree replacement, it may require some permanent preservation, some replanting and some payment in lieu of that within the confines of each planned development. That spells out exactly what that particular development has to do with respect to tree replacement. So that would supersede anything in this base code. But we do have a number of applicants that take advantage of just the base code. It might be smaller applicants rather than large lot developers. So again, shade tree commission recommends approval. We do as staff, I'm happy to have you remove that sentence if you like. I think that would address it and we'll change it with fee code and your planning commission recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dave?
I just have a comment. BIA is a core stakeholder of us, they specifically asked us to give them a chance to have input. I think it would be responsible for us to give them that opportunity. There's no hurry to pass this ordinance tonight. I think we should wait and give them a chance.
Any other comments, Mr. Efflin?
Is there a representative to comment on the public hearing?
I don't know, we have nothing yet. No, I don't think BIA could make it to.
I think Jim McKay is going to be out of town.
Yeah. Be on email today. Okay. We're going to open this to the public and then we can, I think the wishes from Mr. Schaefer is to take it to another reading, yes. Council, have any other comments?
Yeah, I just have, just housekeeping, and I just caught this today, Dave, and I, we should have caught it earlier. Where we reference the grounds and facilities director, that should be Parks and Natural Resources Director. We don't have that position, no longer exists, so we should strike that. I don't know if that needs to occur through the motion process or whether that should just. Okay, yeah. And then Dave, I just had a question.
Tom, is it?
It's, it appears in a couple of different sections on the director of grounds and facility shall.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Our intention again with this particular update was, I don't think that's in section eleven sixty-eight oh seven, which is the, which are the only ones being proposed for change, but we, we can bring forward.
Okay, I thought I, okay, I'll take a look again, but I thought I saw it in the highlighted areas of changes.
Okay, any other comments from Mr. Efflin or questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open it to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward on ordinance number seventeen dash sixteen on the tree? Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Ron Sabatino, and I guess I'm a messenger again.
Give me your address first for the record, I'm sorry.
Three eight nine five Stone Ridge Lane, Dublin, Ohio. Jim Hill's director of BIA is on vacation this week. He has tendered a letter to staff, I don't know whether staff has shared it with you, but it's not. I wanted to read it in the record.
That's fine.
Dave, thank you for your time to talk last week about the proposed tree preservation ordinance. In our conversation, you mentioned the possibility of some changes that could be considered to the current version. We continue to have concerns about this ordinance and its economic development impact on property owners in the city, whether they be developers or current residents who might want to sell the property in the future. Whether development under based zoning or PUD, codifying the costs described in the draft are problematic for property owners and can lead to rendering land undevelopable. I mentioned last week, we have specific concerns about the lack of any variance process in the ordinance and whether the city applies the same standards to their own development projects. We've tried to compare the Delaware policy to other communities and cannot find anything close to being disonerous and expensive. Even Dublin's policy has a variance process allows for replacing trees for trees, not necessarily basing the replacement on caliber inches. I'm going to be out of town next week and unable to attend the meeting. To attend any meetings, future conversation about this until next month. We would appreciate if this item were held a future time when we could have a full complement of participants to discuss and have clarity on any variance process and also the practical impacts on developments.
Madam Mayor, just for the record, as I indicated in my remarks, I got back into the office for the first time today and I did send those comments on too.
Yes, I do have it, thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take it to another reading, April tenth. Moving on to item fifteen.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Fifteen and sixteen can be read together, Elaine?
Ordinance number seventeen dash nineteen. An ordinance for T and R properties approving a final development plan for the enclave at Adelaide consisting of ninety-six single-family attached units on approximately fifteen point eighteen acres zone R six PUD, multi-family residential district with a planned unit overlay district located on the west side of South Hulk Road just north of Arthur Place. An ordinance number seventeen dash twenty. An ordinance for T and R properties approving a final subdivision plan for the enclave at Adelaide consisting of ninety-six single-family attached units on approximately fifteen point eighteen acres zone R six PUD, multi-family residential district with a planned unit overlay district located on the west side of South Hulk Road just north of Arthur Place.
Mr. Efflin?
Madam Mayor, members of council, as you know, we presented this case to you from the staff level at your last meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you, you might have in the interim. We as staff and planning commission do recommend approval of these cases at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Efflin? What is the wish of council?
I move to spin the rules on ordinance, according to the ordinance seventeen dash nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger, roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer? Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
I move for approval of ordinance seventeen nineteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move to spin the rules according to the readings of ordinance seventeen dash twenty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger, roll call, please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Move for approval of ordinance seventeen dash twenty.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second by Mr. Hellinger, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer? Mayor Riggle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Item seventeen is consideration of resolution seventeen dash twenty-three. Elaine, if you'll please read this in record.
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the city to participate in joint litigation to challenge the micro wireless facility provisions of Senate Bill three thirty-one passed by the Ohio General Assembly in two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. Mr. Efflin?
Well, I've actually got, this is kind of three people. Dave Efflin brought this to our attention over the course of the last several months in his discussions with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. This really has to do with a law that was passed last year in the last legislative session regarding the regulation of small micro wireless towers in the city. And essentially, the process by which that legislation was adopted was flawed, in our opinion, and needs to be challenged. And the city is part of the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Group, which last week initiated a lawsuit with respect to the legislation and how it was adopted. And they've asked for the participation of various members to participate in the finance, the cost of that lawsuit. Our estimated cost would be six thousand dollars, which we have, which we have in the budget, so it would not require any kind of appropriation from you. If you had a chance to take a look at the packet, we included a reference to legislation, not legislation, a lawsuit that was passed last week by Lucas County and the City of Toledo in the same manner. This really goes to the core of home rule in the state of Ohio and our ability to regulate what occurs in the right of way. We're not saying we're opposed to micro wireless cell towers. These are very important, we understand, in the ever-changing communications business. But the manner in which they're installed is of concern to us and it should be. And so this legislation, this lawsuit, not addresses really the way it was done, but Dave can I think report, he was in a meeting, I think, the week before last in Dublin, where they talked about, I think AT&T may have been at that meeting, I'm not sure. But there has been discussion about, well, what's the way forward? Even if the lawsuit is successful, you still have this issue of how do you regulate these types of things? So, and I'll, I'll turn that over to Dave and then Darren at that point. The legislation before you tonight authorizes us to participate in the cost of the litigation.
Thanks, Tom. I think Tom's briefed you on this, obviously, in the past and tonight. I think it's pending litigation, that's, that's probably sufficient brief for this evening. I think you all understand the issue and it's pretty straightforward. We have had a series of meetings to try to figure out, you know, potentially a way forward, depending on how litigation may or may not come out. The technology is important. It's important to every community in the United States. But the time, place, manner, aesthetics and use of public infrastructure in the right of way are all important considerations in addition to just the process of how this bill was passed as, you know, what's known as Christmas tree legislation with additional items put into an original bill that had nothing to do with cell towers. So certainly would recommend that you adopt this piece of legislation tonight and join what I think is closer to about eighty communities across the state at this point in challenging the legislation that was passed by the state.
Thank you.
Just briefly, this might be more than you care about, so I apologize. Excuse me. So this, we'll call it deal, but this litigation was structured in a very interesting way where it's not all of us chipping in to one entity who then contracts with the law firm. It's each individual member creating their own relationship with the law firm and doing an engagement letter. So what you have before you authorizes us. If we're doing it as a joint group of cities, we would have to do the resolution for intergovernmental agreement. It's not exactly the same way, but it's in spirit the same idea. So that's why we're doing the resolution to show support to enter that lawsuit, even though it's a minimal amount of money. The one thing I want to point out to you is when we were first pitched to join this, as City Manager Holman indicated, they gave us the quota of six thousand dollars for our share. When I looked at the engagement letter, it was more of a traditional engagement letter where we'll pay the six thousand dollars as a retainer and then they will bill against that. I wasn't super excited about writing a blank check, which is why your resolution, unlike all the other resolutions that the other communities have passed, has that six thousand dollar cap in it, which I will make clear to the law firm that that's what we are authorized to spend. I tell you that because if the lawsuit's going the way we want and we want to, or we need more money, if you're going to expand it, you're probably going to have us come back for more money. I don't want you to say, wait a minute, you told us six thousand dollars and now we're looking at some more. I did that to try to protect us from having to pay more, but if we ultimately decide to chip in more, I don't want you to say, wait a minute, you guys don't know what you're talking about. So from a litigation standpoint, that's kind of where we are. It is difficult because we're doing one law firm with all these different entities paying them. It's harder for me to review the bills and figure out where we are with it. So we may come back, but hopefully we will, with more people participating, there's an estimated total cost of the litigation. So hopefully we won't even get up to our amount, but that's just a risk I wanted to make you aware of.
Any questions for anyone of the three?
Just a couple. Tom, do you know how our legislators voted on this, did they vote the House and Senate? Have you had a contact with?
I believe they were supportive, but I don't want to go on the record until I confirm that, but I believe so. Because it was part of a, a much bigger bill. It's really started as the Petlands bill, Petland bill regarding regulation of pet store owners, was it? It grows city and one thing led to another and pretty soon it was.
Yeah, one of the reasons they're challenging the bill, one of the legal theories is it's not a single subject. They just lumped everything in there, which makes it very hard to single out, as you probably figured out, who voted for what and what the real intent was, which is why they're challenging it, saying you've got to pass a bill on this for this not throwing it in on something else. So you're, Tom, Tom's right, we probably won't be able to figure out how they voted. I'm sure everyone voted for it pretty much because it was probably the omnibus bill for the end of the year.
If you read the legislature, probably five or six different topics at least contained within that.
I guess what I'm asking is, are they aware that we're trying to participate in this legislation?
If they aren't, they will be.
It's pretty big news. I mean, it's, every city is, is, I mean, Cleveland jumped ahead of the gun too and filed their own suit, I believe, and Toledo did. And there's a lot of groups joining as well.
Temporary restraining order hearing, I think up in Cleveland area, set for Thursday, I believe. They took a slightly different path than the other areas.
Because I think it went into effect March, the end of this month or?
I think mid-March.
Mid-March.
I think it was last Tuesday, technically, when.
Any other questions?
No, but I'd be interested to know that answer also.
Okay, so what is the wish of council on resolution seventeen dash twenty-three?
Move for approval of resolution seventeen dash twenty-three, second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Schaefer. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Rohr? Mr. Hellinger?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Yes.
Mayor Riggle?
Yes, motion carries. End of eighteen is the Finance Director's report, Mr. Seltzer?
I did attach a report through the end of February. Most years I don't do one that early just because there's not a whole lot to compare it to. We are slightly down a little bit in our income tax collections, which obviously we'll keep an eye on. But again, it's still pretty, pretty early in the year to really.
I haven't paid mine yet.
No to that. We've got a few days yet, but I'd entertain any questions if you do have any related to the report.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
Yeah, just one thing real quickly, I forgot to mention the, one of the recommendations in that Hidden Valley Golf Course report, among other things, was the council consideration of allowing alcohol to be sold at the club, at the clubhouse and to be consumed on premises. That wasn't included in what you voted on, but I know I did see Mr. Schulte here tonight, who was on that committee. And I don't know if that's why he's here, but he knew that you were going to consider this type. They had adopted the, the recommended rate changes, but that really needs to be a discussion for a future meeting. Because that was one of their, one of the many recommendations, so I wanted to, wanted to mention that. And that's all I have.
You wrote all that down, did you?
Well.
You good?
Yeah.
All right. Council comments, Mr. Jones?
I just have a couple, real quick. Attorney Sherman just pulled up the voting record and both Brunder and Jordan had voted for it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Earlier, we're talking about the, the reduced commercial refuse rates. Are we planning to market that to around town then?
Yes.
I mean, are we putting together a plan for that? Are we, I assume we're not just reducing rates and just?
This was a ten percent reduction. And at our next meeting on April fourth, we're going to discuss a lot more to come down to.
So that's not, that's not the final reduction, you're saying?
Well, well, we'll see what happens.
What I'm saying is I assume we're not going to just reduce the rates and just move on with life. We're going to try to gather some of the commercial business in town.
That's, that's correct. The Public Works Committee will have detailed discussion on the recommendations that were included in the end of the refuse report that you've already seen.
Thank you. Question two is the new water meters we put in, what, what percentage is complete in the city?
Fred, you can stay right there if you want, next to Bill there.
Effective Friday, the outside meter pits was a hundred percent installed. Now we're working on the installation of the inside meters. We have a seasonal position in the utility building office that is scheduling the deployments and city staff has been working on all of the inside meters and that should be done by September first.
And how many opt-outs did we have?
Zero.
Zero, thank you. Last question. The city sign, the signage we put away, finding signage, I guess I never noticed until this weekend. It's only on one side. Was that, is that conversation at some point during passing this stuff?
No, in fact, I think that's one of the reasons.
Or is it phase one of two?
No, the, the existing signs downtown.
The new signs we put up, we want to have signed on them.
Well, they have the mark on the second, on the other, on the back side.
If you're just going the other direction, it doesn't tell you which way to turn on some things.
Right, so they're facing the direction of traffic, but they're generally occur on, on both sides of the street. So if you're coming the other direction, you would have seen a sign, not every time, but almost every time on the other side of the street as well.
They should be symmetrically.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, Mrs. Keller?
Just wanted to take a moment to thank a couple of people for their amazing help during the past days of difficulty with losing a fellow member and council. And our clerk, Elaine McCloskey, handled so much and took care of so many things. That was greatly appreciated. Jackie Walker went above and beyond making sure that things were arranged and that the family didn't have to worry about a lot of the details. And City Manager Holman, your words were very touching and what you had to say about Joe was spot on. And for Mayor Riggle for delivering such a, just an emotional tribute to the man that Joe was.
Joe was. So it was a very tough week, but we will...
We forgot Linda, she was back there working very hard on it also.
Absolutely, Linda. Didn't mean to leave you out. Just helping to get everything taken care of for the family, we so, so appreciate it, all your hard work. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rogers?
The Northwest Neighborhood Association and the school board are continuing to try to work on that ordinance. Our issue, not, no real city involvement at this point, although I did meet with them, we're trying to figure out some maybe creative ways of doing that. They want to finance it, so I think they're meeting...
They want to finance it?
That anyone's greatest partner.
Okay.
And they pay for it, yeah, they want to pay for it. But the idea is to figure out how to get it, because the school board owns it, then we want to continue on it, but we've got to figure out something else. They suggest that the city obviously has some issues with that. We're working, trying to figure out how to create and resolve.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hellinger?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Schaefer?
Just to clear up, since we're talking about the Public Works, Public Utilities Committee, we're going to, we invite everybody to sit down, we're going to take the whole solace proposal, there's several issues there, kind of work through those and come back to council and some recommendations. That's our goal.
And anybody who doesn't sit on that committee is welcome to come on that also.
Absolutely.
When is that meeting?
Fourth of April at 7:00.
And the only thing I have is I just would like to also thank those who pitched in last week and did so much for the passing of Joe, I just really appreciate it. And city staff, everyone that was outside as you turned this corner was just unbelievable. And Joe would have been proud, very proud. And with that, I look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned at 7:52. Who's not in the public hearing?
No, I am.